Good evening, everybody. We are going to get the January 8, 2025 Planning Board Meeting started. It is a unique start today because it's our first Planning Board Meeting of the year, which means the board has not chosen their chairperson and vice chair and secretary yet. So I get the honor of starting it. Typically, the next item on the agenda would be a four-and-a-half-page-long paragraph that I'm going to reserve for whoever is elected chair to read. So I'm going to take the agenda slightly out of order, and I'm going to go to item three, which is the election of officers. So at this time, I'm going to ask if there's any nominations for chairperson.
I nominate Thomas Morgan for chairman position.
I second that.
Okay?
If I can take this part, then. Is there any discussion on that?
No.
All right, all in favor? Six-zero.
The meeting is yours.
All right, thank you. All right, so now we'll go on to vice chair. I will nominate Crystal Tenney for vice chair.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six-zero.
Thank you.
And then now we'll go to secretary. So we should give it to Todd. All right, Lenny, you want to do it again?
Select Todd.
All right, I'll nominate Lenny for, Lenny Hor for secretary.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six-zero. All right, okay, so we'll go back to the opening statement now so we can be official. Now that we've begun, this is a reminder that this meeting is also a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom pursuant to one MRSA Section 403-A. Welcome to Sanford's Planning Board Meeting of January 8, 2025. The meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding, unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you're unable to hear or see something. Please know that if any planning board members have potential conflicts of interest of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the chair, public testimony will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the chair will ask for proponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents, and then those who are neither for nor against, but who may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go to and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The chair may not, the chair may wait until after testimony is concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, et cetera, will not be tolerated, and if these behaviors occur, the chair at his sole discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule for another date. In addition, the chair at his sole discretion will limit repetitious comments, although it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments. Then the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no public comment. However, a member of the board, a member of the board at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning board decisions are based solely on whether the applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impacts of a project in light of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shoreline, or zoning ordinances, and other relevant regulations. After the board discusses the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of fact. Since the findings may substantially affect any appeals rights and also a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, her she must do so within 30 days. The city's ordinance and comprehensive plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in the Planning and Development Department's office at 919 Main Street. Remember that this is a public proceeding. You have the right to hear and see what is happening, and we welcome public participation. Okay, so just going down our agenda, we also have to adopt the Planning Board bylaws for the year. Does anybody have anything they would like to change? Any updates? Right? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve bylaws as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six-zero. Also, the adoption of the 2025 calendar. One of the changes, I believe, was added, it was adding a meeting this month, where we typically, I think, have one meeting in January, but we now are doing two meetings in January.
Yes, that is correct. Motion to approve Planning Board calendar for the year 2025 as proposed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six-zero. Next is Appointment of Design Review Committee Members. We've been given two nominees or requested for addition to the Design Review Committee, Samuel Vandewater and Mark Yurkis. Yurkis? Probably vote on those separately. So a motion on, motion for Mr. Vandewater.
I have a question. Are there two vacancies on Design Review Committee? Okay, excellent.
Have a motion?
I would like to approve the nomination for Mr. Yurkis, application for Design Review Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six-zero. And then Mr. Vandewater?
I would like to, motion to approve Mr. Vandewater's nomination for Design Review Committee application.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six-zero. Okay, moving on. First old business item is still remaining on the table. Second is new business file number R5-9116, Summer Street. Jamie, could you orient us on this project, please?
This is the Nassau on Dorm apartment conversion. They came before you a year and a half or so ago now for our final approval on Phase One, which was the conversion of the three existing dorm buildings into residential apartments. We brought preliminary subdivision approval before you not too long ago. Actually, no, it was about a year ago for this phase, and they are back here tonight for final subdivision and site plan approval for an 18-unit apartment building, kind of across the street from Prior Hussey, which is the first building as you pull in off of what once was known as Summer Street, what is now known as Barth Way.
All right, thank you. The applicant here to...
All right, good evening. Nate Green, Green Mars. Thanks for having us here tonight. Very excited to talk about the next phase of the Nassau on project with you guys. Before we get into it, I would like to give you all an update since it's been a year, since we've been before the board discussing the project. If you guys recall, I think we initially started working on this project sometime in 2021. It started off with a contract zone. In order to get the zoning needed to convert these three former dormitories that were essentially vacant for 40 years. We started construction on the project in the end of 2022. We had some hangups trying to work through DEP permits and things like that, but we've basically been at it now for almost two years, redeveloping these dorms. As things stand today, the top building, which, can we put this screen up so everyone can kind of see the site plan? Okay. Now that everyone can see the site plan, the building at the top left of the site plan, that one has been online and fully occupied since the summer, which is great. That's 28 units. The middle building, we are putting up drywall, putting in kitchens, and hoping to have that one online here in Q1 and '25. And then the bottom building, Prior Hussey, we actually, once we got into the project, unfortunately, we had to tear down the existing structure and basically rebuild from the slab. But in the end, obviously, it cost us a lot more money, but in the end, a better final product, and we're super happy with the way the building turned out, but we have tenants that have moved into that and have gotten occupancy on the upper floor of that building and are hoping to talk to Jamie early next week about occupancy on the first floor. So projects progressing very nicely. The people that live there love the campus. It's a beautiful wooded area and streams. We have connectivity to the rail trail, so it's, the quality of life up there is really, really excellent. And if, as you recall, a year ago, we came in with the next phase of the project, which is what we're here talking about tonight. That's the 18-unit. And if you look on the site plan, it's basically that rectangle building on the corner. The building is based off of what was originally a parking lot for that Prior Hussey building. We were able to kind of squeeze it in that corner and utilize that old parking lot. Now, we'll have to create some new space within the wooded area of the corner, but a lot of that is an old parking lot. It's 18 units. We are utilizing the main housing rural rental program. And basically, this program is something that's been around for a few years now. We came before you guys last year, getting preliminary approval to try and get the funding last year. Unfortunately, we didn't get it last year, but we've continued to progress, and we feel that we'll be much more prepared this year to hopefully get that funding. But basically, what that funding is, is the units have to be rented at 80% AMI. So it'll be one, two, three bedroom units. They're actually, the unit pricing is very close to what we're renting the market rates for. With the other Nassau on buildings, it's within $100 and $150 of that site, so it's essentially market rate. The tenants that will live there, they are income restricted, and then we are capped at that level, but it's essentially a market rate building. Now, the only way that we can actually physically build the building is to get this allocation, and this meeting is very timely because the application is due on January 15th. So obviously, the more prepared we are, the more likely we are to get that funding. So we are hoping that we get the allocation and we can move forward to build it. And that's where we stand today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before I open the public hearing, is there anything that staff would like to add?
Great, thank you. So just a few points that I included in my staff report here. Just to remind you all, there is a overall site plan, a master plan for this site, where they have identified different phases, and this is Phase Two of that master plan. That was a requirement of the contract zoning agreement, and the planning board approved that in November of 2023. The contract zone also stipulates the setbacks, because otherwise, there, it was, the underlying zone would have been urban, and the contract zone required a 25-foot setback from all exterior parcel boundaries. So that is the only dimensional requirement. Additionally, Nate was just talking about the affordable housing and affordable rental program, sorry. Because of their plans to apply for that funding, they're also requesting an affordable housing density bonus tonight from you all, which was something that came out of LD 2003 that we approved in the ordinance last year, which essentially requires that they add some notes to the subdivision plan that says they'll be renting as an affordable housing units. And then there's some benefit to the developer in that there's a reduced amount of parking required for a subdivision that is using the affordable housing density bonus. So the ordinance stipulates that in no instance will there be more than two spaces for every three units. To where our normal ordinance parking is based on the bedroom count, it's not on this kind of project. That said, they are proposing 26 overall spaces tied directly to this building, so they have 14 additional spaces than is technically required. So they are not requiring, or not requesting a waiver of any kind for the first time, subdivision without parking waiver. Thanks, guys. And they could potentially come back in the future and utilize those 14 spaces for some other phase. So just to keep in mind that if this is built out to plan, there's additional parking on site then that, you know, is overflow parking of some kind. Right. As far as buffering goes, the abutting property owners have requested an evergreen landscaping buffer, as well as a retaining wall along the parking lot, the long side of the parking lot, to shield headlights from those abutting properties, and that is shown on the plan as requested. It's a, I think, four-foot tall retaining wall, and then something like 17 arborvitae's, which are an evergreen, pretty bushy shrub. So that should do a good job of screening those headlights. Emergency access was verified with the fire department. A new hydrant is proposed. There's an OX box on site. The building will be sprinkled, and the turning template was included in the packet. There is a dumpster and enclosure shown on plan that meets the standards, and I believe most of the other items that we've listed as a recommended conditions are just cleaning up a couple more things on the site plan and then following through on a few pending items that was part of the DEP approval, actually, for Phase One. So we want to kind of button up that approval before we move forward with more earthwork. I think that was it, but I can answer more questions as we go.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so I'll declare the public hearing open. Open up for anybody who would like to speak in favor of this subdivision or this project. Anybody on Zoom? Right? Anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this project, either here in the room or on Zoom? Anybody who would like to ask a question or make a general comment? All right, hearing none. I'll declare the public hearing closed, and the board will pick it up for discussion. Anybody have anything they would, any questions?
We've seen this before, anyway.
Yeah.
Any questions ahead were already answered.
Okay. There was the one issue with the consistency in the drawings between the old one, old phase and the new phase, but I think that this condition that's being proposed picks that up.
So we do have some proposed conditions that are not, not normal. There's a couple proposed conditions that relate to the DEP approval and just asking for documentation before they start construction that, when we get to them, I don't know if you want me to say them now or wait, but, for example, stormwater quality treatment buffers labeled A through D on approved site plan. Sorry, wrong line. I dumped one. Prior to start of construction, the location of stormwater treatment buffers on the parcel shall be permanently marked on the ground. So that's a condition of their DEP permit. It's not done yet, so we just want to make sure before they start construction, it's done. So another one is, the applicant shall execute and record all required deed restrictions, including the appropriate buffer deed restrictions, within 60 days of the date of this order. The applicant shall submit a copy of the recorded deed restriction, including a plot plan, to the BLR within 60 days of its recording. So those are related to the DEP permit. We're just trying to make sure that those get executed. I added another one. They did give us a turn-in template into this parking lot, but part of this approval, they're going from flat sidewalks to raised sidewalks. So we're just asking for an updated turn-in template into the parking lot to Prior Hussey to make sure that the fire trucks can still make that turn.
They did provide that today, actually. It's in the packet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Not everyone had a chance to see it, so if you want to pull it up, you can.
I didn't have a chance to review it. I apologize. And then I added one. So right now, our subdivision ordinance actually requires an overall subdivision plan. So where this project is a small piece of it, what they did is they had a one-page sheet that in a very broad stroke showed the whole plan, and then they zoomed in on this project, which, which technically meets that, that condition. In the process of building Phase One, the excavation contractor has met some hurdles and has had to make some minor amendments along the way. So instead of asking for a more detailed plan of, of Phase Two and what was supposed to happen on Phase One, I have a condition that states, "Prior to scheduling a pre-construction meeting or within six months, whichever is first, the applicant shall provide an as-built plan," and by as-built, what that means is an existing conditions plan, "of the entire site, provide a narrative of all the proposed changes from the approved Phase One plan, and then request a site plan amendment as necessary for those changes." So in a, that's wordy as in itself. We tried to condense it as much as we could. Basically, what we're asking for is, in the process of going in two years of construction, they've, they've made some minor amendments that in the field, some of them look okay. Some of them, they probably still have some work to do. So what we're asking them to do is to provide us an as-built plan that shows everything they've done today so that we can then, as staff, take and compare that to the approved plan, and then work with the applicant to submit an amended application to try to get approval for those amendments and/or try to help them create a plan that might not be what's on the ground today, but that will work for, for both sides. So instead of postponing this project because we know they have till next Friday to apply, and technically, we need an accurate overall subdivision plan, which they couldn't do before next Friday, we're doing it as a condition so that they can, they can tell main housing that they have an approved project. It gives them six months essentially to get us that work and start the amendment process that they need to do to amend portions of Phase One. And what that's going to do is like this section of raised sidewalk, we're going to better expand that so we can make sure that it works with what they did in Phase One. Again, I didn't want to make them get super detailed today because that would have postponed them today. So we all came up with a bright idea. I've given them six months to do that, so we can get what we need. They can get the amendments that they need to keep moving forward, but it doesn't stop them tonight.
And to be clear, these, this request is, is not necessarily for this specific, what was inside that rectangle. It's what's adjacent to that rectangle?
Correct. It's really the overall site.
The rest of the plan so that it's one cohesive project.
Correct. Because again, one of the, one of the submission requirements is an overall subdivision plan. That technically, the subdivision plan for Phase One as approved is not 100% as-built. So technically, they would have had to give us that updated plan, go through the amendment process now with this project to memorialize everything as one, because although we're only here tonight for the 16-unit, the subdivision is the whole project. We're amending that original subdivision plan. So we're not memorializing the changes they've made to Phase One with this approval. With this approval, we're just saying they can build this new building, but we need to memorialize everything that they want as, because this is, this is one overall project in phases.
Makes sense to me. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay. Do we have findings?
Okay, findings of fact for file R591 Nassau on Apartments Phase Two for an 18-unit multifamily building. The first one. 275-10-39, Conformance with Other Regulations. The standard is met because the proposed subdivision meets all minimum dimensional requirements, performance standards, and all other applicable land use regulations outlined in Chapters 275 and 280.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six-zero.
280-16-7A, Utilization of the Site. The standard is met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six-zero.
I know it did. Group one, 275-10-35, Traffic Conditions. 280-16-7B, Access to the Site. 280-16-7C, Access into the Site. 280-16-7D, Internal Vehicular Circulation. And 280-16-7E, Pedestrian Circulation. These standards are met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Group two. 275-10-31, Pollution. 275-10-32, Sufficient Water. 275-10-33, Impact on Existing Water Supply. 275-10-34, Soil Erosion. 275-10-36, Sewage Disposal. 275-10-37, Solid Waste. 275-10-38, Impact on Aesthetics, Open Spaces, Historic Areas, Wildland Habitat, and Shoreline Access. 275-10-41, Impact on Water Quality and Shoreline. 275-10-42, Impact on Groundwater Quality or Quantity. 275-10-43, Flood Plane Management. 275-10-44, Identification of Freshwater Wetlands. 275-10-45, Stormwater Management. 275-10-46, Recreation in Open Space Areas. 275-10-47, Phosphorus Impacts on Great Ponds. 280-16-7F, Stormwater Management. 280-16-7G, Erosion Control. 280-16-7H, Water Supply. 280-16-7I, Sewage Disposal. 280-16-7J, Utilities. 280-16-7K, Natural Features. 280-16-7L, Groundwater Protection. 280-16-7M, Exterior Lighting. 280-16-7N, Solid Waste Disposal. 280-16-7O, Landscaping. 280-16-7P, Shoreland Relationship. And 280-16-7R, Buffering. These standards are met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All, all in favor? Six-zero.
Well done.
Thank you. Almost done. Group three, 275-10-48, Spaghetti Lots. And 280-16-7S, Airport Encroachment. These standards are not applicable. The applicant is not proposing any development. The standard is not applicable.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six-zero.
275-10-40, Financial and Technical Capacity. And 280-16-7Q, Technical and Financial Capacity. These standards are met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six-zero.
I do have a special motion as well. The planning board accept the information in the December 16, 2024 summer report and the January 8, 2025 Site Plan Review Committee recommendation to the planning board. Grant the requested waivers and find that application for file R5-91 to construct a new affordable housing 18-unit multifamily building with associated site improvements has satisfied the requirements of Article 6 of the subdivision ordinance and Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. By February 8, 2025, unless other arrangements are made with the planning department, provide three copies of revised plans that adequately respond to issues raised in review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. One, prior to the start of construction, the applicant complete the conditions of approval as stated in the DEP, DEP permit L30305, TA, BN, L30305, NJ, CN. And we specifically called out two of those conditions, but they have to meet all of the conditions. Prior to the start of construction, the location of stormwater treatment buffers on the parcel shall be permanently marked on the ground. And six, the applicant shall execute and record all required deed restrictions, including the appropriate buffer deed restrictions, within 60 days of the date of this order. The applicant shall submit a copy of the recorded deed restrictions, including the plot plan, to the BLR within 60 days of its recording. And then two, update to complete plan set with an accurate scale. Three, update the subdivision plan to include, A, stormwater quality treatment buffers labeled A through D on the approved site plan dated 7/19/23. B, alleged. C, dimensioned widths of all access drives. Four, update the turn-in diagram sheet C105 to show all turn-in movements of the design. to show all turn-in movements of the design vehicle in and out of the parking area for the building formerly known as prior Hussey Hall, with the raised sidewalk proposed in phase two. They've already submitted it, but I haven't reviewed it. Five, submit three printed copies of the subdivision and site plan without printing errors. And then, six, prior to schedule a pre-construction meeting or within six months, whichever is first, the applicant shall provide an as-built plan of the entire site, provide a narrative of all proposed changes from the approved phase one plan, and request a site plan amendment as necessary. And then, two, standard conditions of approval. Number two, performance guarantee. Number three, AutoCAD submission. Number four, signed recorded plat. Number five, outside agency approvals. Number six, inspection fee escrow. Number seven, pre-construction meeting. Number eight, landscaping performance guarantee. And number nine, alteration of plans.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Any concern with the additional conditions we've added? All right, all in favor? Six zero. Good luck.
Good luck, guys.
Thanks to the board. Thanks to Jamie and Erin for getting us here. We really appreciate you guys. Love working in Sanford, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to planning director's report.
Status quo. Everything is still quite busy. We did table the item that was going to be coming from Site Plan Review Committee yesterday to you guys in two weeks. Erin, do we have anything else that was going to be on that agenda?
I haven't had a chance to touch base yet with the Sanford Airport manager, Allison Navia, because she was out on vacation. But we've been talking about potentially having some sort of workshop so that projects on the airport have a different set of standards potentially for approval. Because right now, there's a lot of things that happen within the airport. Like, they are subdivisions, but they're obviously not living there because they're drawing parcel lines. And so applying all of our subdivision regulations to those things that, like, building a hangar on an airport maybe is something that we could adjust. And I think that's just more of a conversation. So I've asked Allison to bring something from her department as far as what they would be requesting as a list of the standards that airport development would then be tied to. And then we would have some sort of workshop. So I'm not sure if that's what's going to happen in two weeks, if she's available or not. But that would be my goal.
Okay. Anything else?
I think we're good.
Good?
Yeah.
Communications, anybody have anything from the board? Any board members?
I think one thing I'd want to bring up, maybe we can revisit it at some point, would be the sign ordinance, specifically the temporary signs. I've seen a lot of discussion on commercial temporary signs. And it, it came to my attention that the state law just calls out temporary signs. No categories, doesn't regulate content. Sanford's ordinance specifically calls out and prohibits business content for temporary signs. And then it falls under a off-premise sign, which is prohibited. And so because it state, specifically states that business, you know, temporary signs with business content are prohibited. In order to determine if it's business content, if it's a business content sign, you would have to physically read the sign. And I thought, when we previously discussed a sign ordinance, something similar to that created a First Amendment violation. I believe the state had a lawsuit over religious signs at one point in time. But, so I would like to revisit it because it seems to confuse a lot of people because they go to the state law, see that, you know, this is what I have to do for a temporary sign, not realizing that the town actually prohibits.
I I can talk a little bit on that. So the the state regulates temporary signs as the political signs. That's what the state ordinance is in effect for. So municipalities then regulate the commercial signs. So we do have two sections. We have one section for political signs that pretty much mimic state law. And then we have our own section for commercial signs. And you are correct. Currently, the ordinance says that off-premise signs, which is any sign advertising a business not on the premise of the business, is prohibited. That is something that, if the city decided they wanted to change, they could. It has been discussed previously. Previously, it was not something that wanted to happen. But we can definitely have the discussion. But the reason why the state's rules doesn't talk about commercial signs and their temporary signs is that law was enacted just just for political signs. They don't regulate commercial signs. They only regulate commercial signs by their their traveler signs, which is the ones you see at intersections. That's the only rules the state has on commercial signs because they physically install those signs. So they don't, they don't get involved in commercial signs. They leave that to the municipalities.
It didn't seem like the state differentiated categories. That's all, I mean, that was from my observation. That was.
Again, we can gladly have the conversation.
But doesn't agricultural businesses, aren't they able to put signs, temporary signs out? By state law?
I I would have to look that up. I don't know that. You would know that answer more than me, Jack.
I'm sure you've got more to do than ride around looking for signs.
Signs that are in the right-of-way is a complaint basis thing. I mean, every year, right before winter, you get four hundred people that put plowing signs out. Every spring, right as the first warm weekend, you get four hundred yard sale signs out there. It's it's a, and then it all depends. Really, what happens is down at the traffic circle, four hundred people risk their life and cross the street and put signs in the middle of it. And and then it becomes a traffic hazard. So the police department or the public works department stops and yanks all the signs. And then everybody's mad thinking that the competitor ripped out their sign. And then it becomes a a war of, they're all pulling each other's signs. And signs in the right-of-way are distracting. And and the state doesn't like distractions within the right-of-way.
Anything else from board? Here, go ahead, Lenny.
Yes, just more of a housekeeping matter. Just to clear up, I guess, usually the planning board sends two members to the design review committee. And it's been, for the past couple of years, it's been myself and Crystal. I don't know if you want to continue with that arrangement? Or do we need to actually formalize that or recognize that? Or whether somebody else is interested?
We also send one member to Site Plan Review Committee. We could formalize that again if you wanted to.
That was something, too, that I didn't notice.
Wait, was that it?
What? Site plan review.
Was they allowed to approve the nominations?
I don't know if we need to recognize those arrangements?
Yes.
Excellent. I didn't even think about that.
Oh, sorry.
So I guess, I guess thus far, I've assumed that the members that have been appointed are okay with that continuing. So at any point, if if anybody that is currently a member decides that one Wednesday a month is is not fitting in their schedule, at that point, I think you could say, it's it's been fun, but can somebody else take my spot?
Well, that would be hard for Site Plan Review, that people who have a job.
Right. You have a job, Jack. It's just that yours is a little flexible.
I can leave.
Yeah.
Well, obviously, since you brought it up, Lenny, are you, are you okay with being on the design review committee still?
I'm fine with it. I just didn't know if we needed to take any action to recognize that or if it was, if you're okay with that.
I I don't think we have to. There's nothing in the rules that say we have to appoint or vote. Or it's really just the planning board.
You're on it until you decide you don't want to be. There is no end date.
I do have to. At one point, we had three planning board members on the board. But I think that was because we had unenrolled people and the general public. So I do need to make sure that even with our two new people, we have enough and we don't need somebody else to try to volunteer. So for the next meeting, I will verify who we have. I know Tiffany Moreau is, was a design member. She she's no longer on. She she requested. So I know, I know we've lost a few over time. And it has been a board difficulty to staff before. So I was very excited when I saw we had two people sign up and volunteer for it. So I will go over the numbers again and report back next meeting.
You satisfied?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you okay with staying on the design review since questions asked?
I'll do it. I would like to congratulate Tom and Lenny and myself for continuing our positions on the board. Yay.
I appreciate the vote of confidence to have you, have me back, so.
No, we're glad you came back.
Anyways, anything else?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
No!
Second.
All in favor?